Oh yeah, don't enjoy for a second.
That's what we do.
Higher and higher.
Board chair. Just put that in his right board.
Throwing around the county equipment.
It's tough, it's tough. Everybody ready? Okay. Good morning, I'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order here on June 26th. I'll rise for the pledge.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to add a Firewise contract for removing the brush from the various locations around the county. It's a consent, it should have been a consent agenda item, so you could add that on to H unless you have any questions about it. We approved the bids back in May, so. And it's out of the Firewise grant.
Okay, we'll add it on H.
Madam Chair, under 3E, donation of Highway Department items to Historical Society. We've amended that list. Some of the items went to the Recorder's Office, and the balance of the items will be going to the Historical Society. And Kristin Foster was called to a special meeting in Lake County today, so she's asking that the consideration of the transportation plan be pushed to July 10th. She could have you approve it, but she really wanted, she's excited about this project and wants to explain it to you herself. And then, last, if we could add consideration of capital projects to underneath item number nine. Capital project bid awards.
Okay, that it? Alrighty, so, a motion to approve the agenda then.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will take the opportunity for a public comment. Jarvis knows. Knows what to do, sign in and talk.
Well, this morning, I wanted to talk to you about travel in and around and through Cook County. Brought up basically by the border-to-border discussion the other night. And I got to thinking about that as a lone issue and realizing that there's much more to travel in Cook County than just border-to-border. And some of the concerns that were expressed at that time that apply, I think, across the board are, one was like the invasive species discussion. And I wanted to remind people that things that come into this county come in a variety of ways into every corner of the county. We take a look at birds migrating, and they come through and to, and they come from South America and Canada, and they bring with them what they'd like to bring and leave what they would like to leave. Dogs coming and going, both ours going out and those coming in have fleas and ticks and whatever in their poop and on their coats. The wind, when it comes from out west and it brings the smoke, doesn't bring anything else with it. Bikers and hikers, shoes and gear that they bring with minute traces of where they have been. Bikes that carry dirt from wherever they last had a race. And any car that happens to come into the county. Grandma and grandpa come from Kentucky or Montana. They bring their people and the dirt that they live in daily, the weeds, the bugs, and the manure from the farm. All those things are now a part of us, and they're everywhere in the county, not just on one little trail. We all have a part in changing our environment. Let's not focus on one little piece of that problem. Who is currently using the roads and who will be using the roads? The sightseers, the leaflookers, the hikers, the bikers, the adventurous folks, the tourists that you have sold us to? Is traffic going to stop if this border-to-border route isn't approved? No. Will traffic increase if it's approved? Quite possibly. Will the roads need work, no matter what happens with any promotion of the county, not only border-to-border? Yeah. Is there more funding for road maintenance if this route is designated? I understand that there is. That means that roads that are currently in existence, being used and being maintained by the county, the DNR, and the feds, will continue to be maintained one way or another, and they will continue to be used. With border-to-border, we open the possibility of some funds for already existing roads that are already maintained and are already used. Why am I bringing this up? Well, to try and help people become more comfortable, to step back, learn more, and then talk with more knowledge and thoughtfulness for everyone involved, to stop ranting and running in fear, to look at the bigger picture of what is happening countywide, countywide, not only in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next item on our. Oh, sorry, Mike. Okay, you're always so quiet.
I usually don't say anything.
I know. Thank you for saying something for five minutes.
It'll be much shorter than that.
Mike Carlson, I live on Highway 61 in Crawfhill, very short comment. At the meeting last week about the off-highway vehicle route, or however you want to name it, there is still confusion about the terms, but that's something I'm really not so upset about, I think we'll get it straightened out at some point. But what I did hear is some personal attack, which says, "Oh, we don't want these motorheads carrying on." Well, I just want to say that if your car breaks down, or your snow blower breaks down, or your lawnmower breaks down, I hope that you find a motorhead available to take care of it.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. Alright, so that concludes our public comment. Next item on our agenda is Visit Cook County. You sure can.
Madam Chair, can we approve the consent agenda?
We'd need to do that. Let's approve it.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, this is Ann Brady, Josh Molly, and Miss DeWolfe. As we do once a year, we are here to talk to you about the. I'm kind of loud, but is everything better? First of all, I want to introduce you to our new event resource coordinator, replacing Katie Krantz.
Let's turn it on.
Do you feel like you're in school? I have a timeout.
Do you want us to just move to the front table?
Testing. Test, test, test. Is that better?
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I thought you could hear me before, but.
We can. Anyway, good morning Commissioners and everybody else in the room. Linda Jurick, Executive Director of Visit Cook County. With me today is Lily Nelson Peterson, our newest employee. She replaced Katie Krantz as our event resource coordinator. Really happy to have Lily onboard, fourth generation, maybe fifth. We have some discussion on that, right? Here to talk to you about the 1% event tax that we collect locally, lodging tax, and Lily's prepared a packet. I'm just going to walk you through it, please stop me at any time if you have questions. Just a little bit of history before we start. In 1617, I arrived in 2013 and really put our arms around the events in our county. Two and a half years ago, we started with a new position, and that was the Event Resource Manager, to really help us produce and market events in Cook County. In 1617, we had 25 events on the books, 17, 18, 30, 18, 19. Projected events are 38, but that's counting the Jamada Grant Program as one event, and in that program, there's 13 events. So, we're pushing around 50 events that Visit Cook County touches in some way, shape, or form. The first thing that you're going to see in your packet is something that I've encouraged this area of Visit Cook County to get their arms around, and that is the equivalent of our marketing content calendar, but it is about events. So, you'll see that there's a real methodical process in how we back into or look forward to our events each year. I asked Lily because it's a really busy position. I would have to say that Lily being with us for two full weeks and two part-time weeks now has probably hit the ground in the busiest month of the year. So, this is just a little June to-do list for her. It gets lengthy. I'm kind of crazy with my people, and I ask this to be a part of our weekly staff meeting, so very important to see what happens in the world of this position. The next piece, probably for you number people out there, is quite important. You'll see the 2016-17, or 2018-19 budget as well. We're projecting $418,000 to be budgeted for the 18-19 events that we support in our area this year. Quite lengthy list there. I would have to say that, you know, there's some events, like last weekend, we support the Lutzen 99er at $26,000. Those dollars come from LTTA as well as Jamada, for those, Lutzen Topti Tourism Association, Grand Ray Area Tourism Association. I work really hard to try and make, make sure that our tourism associations know that an event that occurs in one part of our county can truly affect the entire county, and the Lutzen 99er is one that truly shows that. I would probably guess that everybody would agree that last weekend was quite a crazy weekend in Cook County with the Wooden Boat Show and the Lutzen 99er and Summer Solstice happening on the same weekend. The event at Lutzen was quite incredible last weekend, and probably the best Lutzen 99er that we've ever hosted. And just a little bit about that, we have up to five events that are really impacted by outside event coordinators, the Lutzen 99er being one of them. I think we tend to see this with our big races more than smaller, you know, community events. Those bigger races planned by outside race coordinators really put us on the map. The Le Grand du Nord grew by over 100 riders this year on Memorial Day weekend, and coupled with the art festival and opening of the art galleries that weekend, that was also quite a tremendous weekend as far as a tourism impact. Another piece of Lily's job is this event calendar, which is mimicked completely on our website. I don't know, hopefully all of you know that last summer, we decided to rework our website, and in four short months, we launched a brand-new Visit Cook County. It's quite comprehensive, and we work daily on it as far as optimizing the website, driving traffic to it. And at a board retreat this year, we're getting much more into digital marketing, which is quite exciting, and we're able to grab a lot of our analytics off our website, and we're seeing incredible growth with that. I would suggest for any of you that want to know more about our impact in the outside world on our website, there is an area called the Media Room. You're going to see everything from our articles that we write for the Cook County News Herald to places where we touch the big, wide world out there, so that's kind of an exciting spot on our website, and I encourage people to look at that. The other thing that we do frequently is, well, all the time, is we create an event dashboard. This will show us individually the ROI per person by event. So, Lily's created the dashboard for the Lutzen 99er, which you can see is a big investment for Visit Cook County and the LTTA 1%. It also has a very, very large impact. So, that's there for you to look at. You can see that sometimes we go over budget. Last year, we did, and we did that because of support to the Superior Cycling Association via the Lutzen 99er, via the LTTA Lodging Tax Collection, which was a $5,000 support for trail funding, very important to us, as well as the 99er scholarship. So, there's ways beyond the event that events touch our community, trails, education, I think that's really important to know. The next piece that you'll see is the Grand Ray Block Party, first-time-ever event that was supported by Grand Ray Area Tourism. That occurred the weekend, what was it, June 9th? That was the same weekend as the Voyage 5 and 10K. Also a really fun weekend, and something that I know I've met with them, Lily and I have met with that, the event organizers for that, and it is something that they want to continue. Another event that we did this year that I just really, really feel like we need to mention, having grown up here, is the Welcome Neighbors with our Canadian travelers. We did that on their Victoria Day Celebration Weekend, which is a three-day weekend, and we worked hard and marketed in the Thunder Bay Market to bring our Canadian visitors south for the weekend. Also a very fun weekend. Just a little piece of, for the Grand Ray Block Party, what you're going to see here is a way that we'd really try and collect data, knowing that, you know, it's all about heads and beds for us, but I truly understand, and so does my team, that it goes way beyond that. So, if there is a way for us to collect data on our visitors, we do that, and with the Grand Ray Block Party Weekend, we did that via a passport program, stop in the stores, get your passport stamped. And I think we had 50 responses, and how did that, how did that work out? Was that the two different tabs here? Right, so the back page, you'll see lodging data, as well as how did you find the Grand Ray Block Party? Interesting stuff. Well, for me, anyway. Another festival that we, we did this year that was brand-new, supported with a local event coordinator, Jay Aerosmith Decou, was the Kite Festival. Of course, that's pretty fun, it puts us on the map in different ways. It gathers and touches a different demographic, as in kite flyers, it's always dependent on wind, of which we had very little that day. But I do believe it's going to go off again. Another way that we can show you events that, the Boundary Waters, you'll see two pamphlets in your book, and this is touching the Gunflint Trail, of course. The Boundary Waters Expo was something that the Gunflint Trail Association supported for years. It was moved this year, less allocation of funding, moved to bearskin, and was the best year that they've ever had. So, tweaking events as they move along, not just giving them up, was very important, and I would say that this was the best Boundary Waters Expo that they've thrown up. And then, just last but not least, when you think of the 1% and you think of it touching and supporting events, it also works for programming. We support the Wet Your Paddle Program, which is a Taste of Canoeing on the Gunflint, hosted by our outfitters, as well as the U.S. Forest Service Naturalist Program. So, there's many different ways that the 1% is working for us and for our visitors, as well as our locals, I would have to say. Do you have anything to add, Lily? Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Wow, so busy, busy, and you keep creating.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's quite interesting.
I would like to ask a question on the 99er scholarship. Now, how does that work?
That works with an essay. The high school senior is asked to simply write something about an achievement in their life. So, when you think of somebody training and preparing for the Lutzen 99er, you certainly put on a dicker head, and, you know, work to accomplish your goal with a bike race. Well, I think the same is, holds true for our high school students. And so, they're asked to write about a challenge, and it can be anything from, you know, something at home, to academics, to athletics. And there's a couple teachers involved, and people involved with the race, myself, Mike Carlson, and we sit down and we just simply interview the students. The award, what I like about this is a scholarship is not awarded until they finish their first semester at school. So, I think that, and then they report back. So, it's kind of, it's kind of different than most scholarships.
Okay, very good to do that. Questions, comments? Commissioner DuKirk.
We also have the Second Annual Gay Pride Festival that happened last weekend amongst all of the other events, and we had a Petunia the Pig Walk with us. So, that doesn't happen very often, which is just part of our inclusivity in this community, that pigs are also allowed to walk with us. And then, Lily, I am fifth generation, so I think you are, but we will check with Danny Helmersen, the family historian, and he will verify that for us.
If I can just add one comment on the festival that you've just mentioned, it's something that, I shouldn't say we struggle with, but we really think hard about. So, Lily, in, on any given day, she can get a call that would say, "We are having a rummage sale on the corner of Third and First." Those are things that we really, I mean, we would blow out our event calendar and our website if we tried to keep track of the local community events. So, just so you know, we steer people to the Cook County News Herald, to boreal, we really have to try and, you know, there's, there's always conversation, but we really need to try and discern which events that we really want to have, because it's a visitors newsletter. So, just so you know that.
Yeah, I don't know how you keep up, because there are constant different little groups and clusters of people in the community that are throwing things and putting together and bringing them up, and I know some of them, if you're listening, there is an application process with Visit Cook County to get help with some of these events and work to do, and so, yeah, I mean, law enforcement showed up to help us with traffic, and I couldn't believe it, with the 99er going on. Thank you deputies, you are awesome. But it's like, how can you get all of this stuff together, plus the normal things that they do on a daily basis, and I'm sure dispatch had phone calls, I'm sure they get phone calls, "What's going on in Cook County? Why are there people crossing the road with a pig?" Thank you guys for all that you do.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you and welcome, Lily. Great job. You've hit the pavement running, literally.
Ask for questions.
Thanks so much, Linda, for your presentation. If anybody has any further comments or questions, I'm sure Linda's available.
Linda@VisitCookCounty.com.
Okay. Next item, we're going to have a presentation by Judy.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Morning Board. I have two action requests this morning. The first one is for adding a Roth 457 option. We currently have an employee 457 option with a three, up to 3% county match, and employees from the Benefits Committee have asked if we can also add the Roth option to it. That's an after-tax option. The part that the county contributes would still be the 3% pre-tax, so there wouldn't be really any difference for the county's contribution. It just gives the employee another option. The maximum limits are still the same, it's, I believe, I just have to look this up, $18,500 or $24,500, depending on age of employee.
Okay, so that sounds like a good option for folks, and was that discussed when, when the representative came last week?
Yes, yes. Yes, and actually, one of the, we had two representatives, the Nationwide and the Minnesota Deferred Tomp, and both of them said it was a matter of, well Nationwide said, really, they already have it on the form, it's just a matter of initiating it at your county, and the other representatives said it's really just a matter of sending us an email and saying you want to set it up.
Okay, so for the first time for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so they know all about it, signed up or not?
Well, yes, so staff haven't signed up yet. What we wanted to do, most, the majority of staff use the traditional 457 option, but what our plan is, we kind of ran it through payroll to see if there would be any concerns, and then we want to bring it before the board, and then pending board approval, then we'd send out a newsletter and say, "Hey, you have this option to also have a Roth 457."
Okay. Questions, comments from anybody? Yes?
So, the employees in the Roth 457 is after-tax, but the county is still pre-tax?
Yes.
On the matching 3%? And then, we have open enrollment period, so since we're enacting this now, can they enroll now if they choose?
Yes, actually, the 457 plan isn't subject to open enrollment. People often change their 457 depending on what happens at home, different things. Open enrollment mostly refers to insurance benefits, like life insurance, dental insurance, and health insurance. Those are limited to just that one time a year.
If you sign up for both, you still only get the one match?
You still only get up to the 3% pre-tax match from the county.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, anybody else? Sounds like a good.
Good option.
Good option.
Motion to approve.
So, we have the motion. Can I hear a second?
Support.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have a second action item, and that is to approve the posting to hire a replacement for dispatcher jailer. We unfortunately had to let go a dispatch, a probationary dispatcher jailer last week, and so we are submitting a request to post, to hire a new one.
And that's part of the annual budget, anyway?
Yes.
Just replacement. Okay, questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, we're moving along pretty good here. Maybe just Bill know we're ready?
It's 10:25.
There may have been a math error.
Kristin had a long presentation.
She was going to have a long presentation, yes.
Madam Chair, I do have an item for Commissioner Concerns.
Okay.
Just to remind the Board, I don't know if we've done one of these in a long time, but one of the considerations we did a while back is a Commissioner can submit something for the Board, so I'm going to submit this and request that it be added to the next agenda. And it is a resolution for the border-to-border trail that I would like to be considered in the July 10th Commissioner Meeting. It's short, so I can actually read it unlike other resolutions. Whereas the Cook County Board of Commissioners serves as the Road Authority for all state aid roads and county aid roads in Cook County, and whereas Phase 1 of the border-to-border touring route will access Cook County roads. Whereas we respect the process and work of the DNR, NOHVCC, and Minnesota Four-Wheel Drive Association to create a plan that will partner with Cook County to preserve our natural resources with minimal impact. Whereas Cook County will work with the DNR, NOHVCC, and Minnesota Four-Wheel Drive Association to ensure a safe and successful border-to-border trail. And whereas Cook County will work with the DNR and others to ensure proper funding to maintain Cook County roads, included in the B2B trail. Now therefore be it resolved that Cook County supports the border-to-border touring route, because we are a tourism-based economy and welcome many forms of tourism and recreation. Be it further resolved, we respectfully request to be included in all phases of planning the border-to-border route. This is the first resolution I've ever written as a Commissioner in my second term, and it is based on the feelings of the community. I think that this addresses a lot of the concerns that we heard during our meeting of people wanting us to do something, to let them know that we care and we're concerned and that we're involved, and that we want to be a part of this process. This, you know, usually I say stay out of it, let the agencies do their job, but this does include five of our county roads, three of them in my district. So, just if you would please take the time to consider this and add it to our next agenda, I would appreciate it. And Bill's right on time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Administrator Cadwell. We have two items that are on the agenda for today, which I inadvertently assumed was at ten twenty-five.
Inadvertently. We're speedy.
I'm here, I'm here.
You're correct, you're correct, but we're snappy today.
Yes, this is good, this is good. Two items. The first is the Burgland interim use permit request, which was heard by the Planning Commission at its June thirteenth meeting. A review of that request is that Dean Burgland, who owns eighty acres up off of the Gunflint Trail, who has throughout his family ownership of the parcel, included gravel pit operations, wood chipping, firewood processing operations, and that sort of thing, came into Land Services earlier in the year and asked about the feasibility of having a commercial refueling operation. Now, that in its own right, the commercial component to that seems, you know, fairly large in scale for what ostensibly is a residential zone district. And so working with Dean, what, it turns out that the commercial is really kind of a local user-defined facility rather than, you know, all the commercial traffic on Highway sixty-one. So what Dean wants to do is put in a two-tank facility which has a thirteen, or fifteen thousand gallon capacity for each of the tanks. Originally, he wanted to put it on an area which was surrounded by wetlands and some open water hydrology. And the thought of having thirty thousand gallons of diesel in that environment didn't seem like a really good fit. So Dean moved the site up to where he's already got industrial activities on the parcel. And it made a lot more sense in, as far as the logistics, the concern. If you read the packet and especially the review of the meeting, there is a lot of concern there, not only from some of the Planning Commission members, but also some of the immediate property owners. And that's, that's still a concern. But the nice thing is, is that it's required to meet both federal, state requirements, including MPCA would come up and do site visits and that sort of thing. And in listening, Dean's cousin Steve is the owner of this business. It's a fairly foolproof method. They've got a lot of safeguards in place. You know, the hose, if it breaks off, it shuts down. They've got security cameras, which are another concern, twenty-four hour operation. So it really has some of the safeguards that we would expect at the local government. But we don't, I've been doing the administrative stuff for ten years now, and I've never done a commercial fueling request. So the conversations were pretty wide-ranging, and I mean, it took nearly an hour for the decision to be made. In the long run, it's probably got some local benefit because of the fact that the commercial operators here, the contractors, can go up there. And Dean, in speaking with Dean before he submitted, one of the big things that the commercial haulers are concerned about is when they redo Highway sixty-one. And that's going to congest further what it is and ability to get in to the gas station. And I think, and I'm not sure, but I think Bucks is the only one that has a high-speed pump. Does that sound familiar? So, yeah, so, you know.
In the county?
Well, I believe, in Grand Marais, yeah. And then you throw in the fact that you've got, you know, tourist volumes which are, you know, very constrictive in a lot of periods of the summer. And if you have a eighteen-wheel truck that you're trying to get down to Duluth and you need gas or diesel and you have to wait, it makes sense logistically. So the issues were the logistics and the viability of the request versus the potential impacts. And we always look at what's the worst-case scenario? Well, the worst-case scenario is that we could lose thirty thousand gallons of diesel, but the safeguards such as double-wall tank construction and they will be placed on concrete, which will limit the amount of permeability and potential impacts to the groundwater. So the Planning Commission voted four to one. There was one nay vote to approve the request. The conditions that we established were pretty far-reaching. I don't know if they're comprehensive. And if we need to change those, it certainly would leave it up to the Board of Commissioners. But Planning Commission did recommend that it be approved. There are oversights involved, including a review annually by the Land Services to go in and make sure that everything is, you know, working as functional, as intended. So they voted four to one to approve it, and it's before you know.
Thank you, Bill. Do you know his motivation for this? Why he decided that this would be something he wanted to do?
Well, I think there's, I think, you would think, well, boy, this might make money. But Dean never brought money into this. This is about, he's a hauler, he's a trucker. And I think what it came down to is just that there aren't a lot of options for commercial haulers in Grand Marais and in Cook County that, you know, and if you get stuck down in Grand Marais with, you know, a couple RVs and people running in to get some chips and all that, I mean, that's a constraint on your, on your time and your schedule and that sort of thing. So it just, his cousin has operations in North Dakota, Illinois, and Wisconsin, and he's pumped over fifty million gallons of fuel for commercial haulers, and he hasn't had any issues. So I think Dean sees this as an opportunity for local haulers, local truckers, to be able to come into a place without having to confront traffic and pedestrians and that sort of thing. So that's his impetus. I didn't see anything other than him seeing this as a really good fit. And I, you know, I personally, I think Land Services agrees with that fit. It makes sense.
So this is not an interim. He's going to put all this work into this piece of land for a long time? It isn't just like over the summers or?
No, and if you look, it is an interim use permit, and the reason why we did that is because if there are conflicts, then we retain the ability to intervene and restrict what the use is. And I think we did it initially for a two-year period. And then that will be reviewed, and if he wants to amend that, he can do so at that time.
And how will he advertise for the folks who are coming down on sixty-one that he has this service up there?
There won't be advertising. You have to have a key to access.
Yep.
So it will be word of mouth with local contractors and businesses. You'll have a key to access. And one thing that Bill missed is that there will be a cap on how much can be pumped at a time. They'll set it at like a hundred and fifty gallons. So if for some reason a trucker had a heart attack and fainted next to his truck or whatever, it couldn't go over a hundred and fifty gallons coming out at one time. So it's a key access.
And they get the key from?
Well, it's going to be a card process. I don't know if you remember when Mark and Mary Black had the gym downstairs? You had a key where you could access twenty-four hours a day. It's the same type of thing.
Yep.
It's a, it's a, you put money in and you're allowed, you know, I guess it would be like a limited ATM card or something like that where you can put funds in, get as much gas, reinvigorate your bank and that sort of thing. So it's well-thought-out. I mean, it isn't just like, you know, we're going to put a tank here and, you know. It's got a lot of good connections to it.
And it's down in kidney corner from my house, and there is tons of truck traffic in that area. So the, you know, there was a concern about additional traffic and noise. And I said, you know, we're full-triade right now, and I can hear absolutely everything. And I'm just a mile up, so I don't, I'm not concerned about this. I think this is an asset.
Because you serve on the Planning Committee, so you've heard the discussion.
Right, you know, I'm hopeful that even our fire department will be able to have access. That will be Gunflint Trail and Maple Hill. Because we currently, you know, if we've got an ambulance run or something and have to go downtown and you get another call and you're sitting there waiting for the guy with the cop and the kids to get out of the store.
The other thing too is that we did include the highway department in consultation on this. And they don't have, they have no concerns about this. It's, it's got a good straight run, so visibility is excellent on both sides. They're gonna, excuse me, do some improvements to the entryway. But that's on Dean, that isn't on the county. So it's a, it's a fairly, fairly innocuous proposal.
And there's currently trucks in and out of there for gravel, so it can already accommodate and handle that traffic.
And the county does crushing in there. So there is a high volume of, and I think Dean was asking contractors to send in comments and stuff. They're busy, so we didn't get a lot of those. But everybody that I've spoken with is like, "Yeah, we're going to use this," so.
I even tried to worm my way into using it.
Comments, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. It does make sense. And so my only concern, and actually I read through all the letters just to, because my concern for the neighbors is the only concern I have. And I think there was a lot of fear in those letters, and I don't believe that that fear will, I don't think the environmental risk is very large. It doesn't appear to be with all, with everything that's happened in the last twenty years, there are so many safeguards in place now. And like you said, thirty thousand gallons is the highest risk. It's the worst possible on a concrete face. It would be horrible if that happened. And the big question mark I have is about the thousand feet from the Devil's Track River. That seems like a huge distance. That's ten times a hundred feet that require all houses, septic systems, et cetera, to be from any water, you know, on lakes and so forth. So a thousand feet does seem like a substantial distance.
But, then, excuse me.
Yeah, no, that's kind of a question.
Well, yeah, and, but it isn't.
Yeah.
Anything hydricly transported is going to move rapidly. And so I think that's, that's an important concern and consideration. One of the things that we, was discussed, was whether there should be an impervious layer underneath the apparatus and everything. And I, they didn't make, the Planning Commission didn't make a firm commitment on that, but it certainly wouldn't be outside of the purview of the Board of Commissioners to at least address that and perhaps enter it as a condition on the permit. That's the big concern. And Bob Shannon, who's a, an environmental chemist professionally, his letter was, was pretty compelling reason for all the concerns and cautions that should be established. So I think that, you know, this is kind of a holistic approach at this point because you, as a board, can, you know, see the concerns that are there. They're pretty transparent concerns and go from there.
So it would be reasonable to add conditions outside of what you have here? And I, what I think it was mentioned that there was, there was conversation around adding an insurance policy or another layer of insurance to address some of those environmental concerns?
Right, and we did contact MCIT, Minnesota County Intergovernmental Trust, and they felt that the coverage at the carrier, at the provider level was sufficient to not warrant any additional coverage. So, and according to Dean's cousin, there's, he's got, he's got a couple million dollars of liability coverage. He has to, because he's an inter-commerce business. He works in multiple states.
So it's critical, he's going to own the business, not Dean. So Steve is going to own the business, not Dean.
I'm not sure how that's going to work out.
Whose insurance is it?
Yeah. That certainly, you know, this is, this is a new ground for the, for Land Services. And I think that we don't have the full story and the full grasp of what other different areas should be involved. I think environmentally, economics, and aesthetics are the three things that are critical here. And so it seems like a great idea. It seems like they've addressed a lot of the stuff. Is there more that needs to be addressed? I'd rather address it proactively than do it reactively, which is typically an environmental concern.
Yeah, that's really hard, and I just don't like to say do it proactively. So, but there is insurance that MCIT, owner insurance, whoever that owner is, Steve or Dean, there is owner insurance in place to warrant this, that the MCIT thought was adequate.
Yes.
That's what I, okay.
Yes, yep.
And one of the other questions I asked was if they had access to a water tender, which Dean does, because these tanks are fire-rated. But as you all know, it's been eleven years, hate to jinx it, but if a fire comes through, I wanted to make sure they had the ability to water down those tanks so that they didn't hit the fire rating and split open during an emergency. And Dean even was prepared to answer that and was ready to cover it. So I think that they have thought of all situations and circumstances. I mean, where Steve has these other facilities, wildfire isn't a concern, and here it is. So they're prepared for even that.
So he's putting in sprinkler systems?
No, he has a tank tender, so he can spray it down.
Okay.
Which is what we used during the last fire. Bouches has one. It's a huge tank you fill with water and you can keep it sprayed. I don't think there's anywhere.
All right, it's adjacent to the tanks then?
He's got it available, yeah.
And Commissioner Burschain, the surveillance process is, obviously, I, surveillance, I just thought it'd be a camera, but they have the ability, when there are issues or there's customers at the tank, to be notified on their cellphone. And they can actually watch the feed, so they'll know who's fueling. If there's an accident or a spill, they'll know who spilled. And the bottom line is, is that, and this was a pretty valid point, was that, you know, if the, if the truckers are paying for the fuel and there's a spill, they're still responsible for the lost fuel. They have to pay for it. And that's not a good business model to just, just lose fuel and have to regroup your losses and that sort of thing.
So maybe I didn't hear this quite right, but, and it's just a clarification question. You sort of implied that we could set further conditions on approving this. But my question is, I would, you know, like to see that come from the commission because they know a whole lot more about it than I do.
Right.
So I, you know, could you follow up on that a little bit?
Yes.
Why did you recommend that? Do you personally feel that, or professionally feel that maybe we should apply more conditions? And why didn't it come out of the commission itself?
The Planning Commission did adjust and change the conditions to what they felt was needed. They did make changes to the original.
And let me follow up on that, that the fact that this is an interim use permit does give us the ability to monitor and adjust. So I think that's a good fit, you know, immediately. We, the discussion, we did discuss additional conditions and that sort of thing. And I even made a point of stating that, you know, we could probably come up with four or five more conditions. But then, you know, is there a point where that's going to be burdensome to the applicant? And all of a sudden, instead of having this, this nice viable little home business operation, if you will, he's, he's got to, you know, he's got to go over the top on preparations, which takes some of the allure out of that process. I think that the interim use permit is really a good process for this one.
Sure.
And Dean, you know, I talk with Dean regularly and we have a good relationship. And I think he grew up here. And his concern is basically that he doesn't want to do anything that's going to adversely affect, you know, the water or anything else.
Yeah, and I don't want to imply that I'm against this at all, but I guess I'm concerned about vetting it properly and, you know. So are there triggers? Maybe it's my lack of understanding. so are there triggers? Maybe it's my lack of understanding. Are there triggers to, that would cause, uh, us to reject this interim permit? Or is it just at the will of a commissioner, or how does that process work?
Well, if you look at the conditions, which are in your draft resolution, those are, those are the guidelines that, that the permit holder has to adhere to.
Okay.
And, you know, we try and be as, as thorough and comprehensive, but at, at the same time, when he comes in for a review, we as the local government unit have the ability to go in and state, you know, we think that this is a deficiency that we would recommend. It has to go back to the planning commission. It has to go back to the Board of Commissioners. That if we see things that are either deficient or maybe need enhancement, then we can do that at, as part of that review process.
So is it contin- contingent on the twelve statements? And only you couldn't have another one?
Well, you, you can, but I, I think, I think your suggestion that this should go through the planning commission would be a good approach. And the bottom line is, is that he's, Dean, even though he doesn't have any infrastructure in place or anything like that, he's got a review already at the end of this year, so there's a six-month turnaround between implementing his business facility and having a land services review. So I think that really makes a lot of sense as far as the timeframe goes.
Okay, thank you, I think.
So he's in the process, once this is confirmed, of building it out for this year and be open next year?
I'm not sure what his time schedule is.
Okay.
I think the big thing is that they have to haul in the tanks, and those are completely transportable. They can come in on a flatbed. And so it's a, it's, and the other thing is that if it doesn't work out, they can just remove the tanks and bring them to another facility. It isn't like it's a perm, you know, i- i- and one of the things, Commissioner Shearson, that you were mentioning about tanks. Well, tanks, anything over twelve hundred and fifty gallons has to be accredited or reviewed by the MPCA. And on a private residence, you can have a tank, and there's many of them in Cook County and northern Minnesota, where property owners have five hundred gallon gas tanks that have no regulation, that have no oversight, no environmental protection. So the fact that there's layers of protection and caution here gives a little more, a little more, I guess, peace of mind as far as that goes.
Yeah, they have to be reviewed by the MPCA.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry.
Have you been out and looked at, um, how COMO did their tanks out there?
Just east of town?
Yeah.
I was out there when they, when they put those in initially.
When they were, like, last year when they did it?
Uh, I was before, I think, when it was, was it Superior or? Um, that was like two thousand seven, two thousand eight. That was a different scenario.
No, this is next to there in the bulk, the bulk yard there for COMO. They actually, um, when they installed the, they dug all the contaminated material out and they installed the new tanks with berms around,
Mm-hmm.
which is capable of holding how much fuel's in the thing there. And I think if this is installed that way, you're, it's pretty much foolproof then.
And I think those are like, that's like a proportionally larger tank too. Isn't that like a forty thousand or a fifty thousand? No, just the, then I, I guess, I guess I'd have to say that I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, they basically build a berm up, line berm around the tank.
Right.
It's supposed to hold the capacity that's in the tank.
Right.
You know, I think if it's installed like that, there, there are no problems.
Well, and one of the conditions was that he has to put a berm. There is an interface with, uh, natural vegetation uh, north, I guess it would be, or west of the site. So he'll have to have a berm. The big thing at that point is impervious surface. Because if it goes down, eventually it's gonna go across.
Yeah, these are lined.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. So, so that would be one, I think the, the thing that we didn't resolve at the planning commission was, was just how much impervious liner or layers there needed to be.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I can, I believe the MPCA guidelines require that kind of an installation, that there be for, for an exposed tank installation, that there is, um, requirement to be able to handle that capacity. So they're, the MPC, the MPCA rules affecting the, the safe use of those tanks should cover any of those questions.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
The other, the other alternative is to bury them. They're not burying them because this is not gonna be a permanent installation. This will be a, um, interim installation.
Right, right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
I'll support.
Any further discussion?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask one more question about the lighting, because I think, um, Commissioner DuKirk pointed out that the noise is already there. It's not going to increase, um.
The, um, twelve conditions were altered for lighting. So the lighting only turns on when a person comes into the lot.
Oh, that's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
So how does that work?
I, I.
Motion sensor.
I think, no, I don't, I think they want, Dean wants that on.
All the time?
All the time, yeah.
Changed it.
That was, that was, that was the conversation, and it's a valid, a valid concern, because night skylight, lighting, as you know, is, is in vogue, uh, for good reason. And, and then you get into the aesthetics, but also the safety issues. And if you're coming in at three in the morning and you're refueling, you know, putting four hundred gallons of diesel, um, it's good to know that you're in an environment where you can see what you're doing. So, so the, the condition that we established was just that it has to be night sky compliant.
And down directed.
And down directed. And, and the, the important thing there is down directed, because night sky compliant is a catchphrase. We don't have anything here that, that states that. Uh, but it's a, it's a concern, and, and Commissioner DuKirk brought up the, the, the County Road Eight Gunflint Trail uh, commotion when those lights went in, and ultimately they brought them down, and, uh, I think that's the intent here. It's just not to have that glow where the burgling refueling center is.
Number two does say activated only during refueling operation. That is the condition.
What page is that on?
I don't know, but here you go.
No, but under the draft.
On the draft resolution?
Under the draft, it just says lighting on the site will be down directed and night sky compliant.
That's the revised condition.
That's, this is the revised.
So we could add to the revised.
Well, just a question. So if we vote on this, we're voting on which one?
The revised?
Which is?
The revised.
The, the draft resolution has the revised condition.
Thirteen.
Okay.
And it really covers a lot from, you know, the wetlands to the fact that, um, it'll be reviewed every year. And the fact that if it ever is, um, sold, transfer of the property, so forth, will, um, expire. The permit will expire for that. So, my copy doesn't show any drain, so I'm, oh, yeah, it does.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay.
So look that over?
There's some confusion there, wait a minute.
So just, just to follow up on my question about the lighting. So I just wanna make sure, so it's not shining up?
No.
And it's wooded, so neighbors should not be affected adversely.
I was trying to think what neighbors are next to it. You've got the golf course.
Yeah, it's, it's a really, it's a really good, I mean,
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not weighing my total, but I just wanna know what it is.
And, and with, there's a building right there. They've got their huge pole building there. And at the original site, that was gonna be up on a little knob. This is, this is more in a recessed area. It's surrounded by topography. I don't, I, I just don't get a sense that it's gonna be, and, and the bottom line is, is that I know if there are, if there are complaints, Dean will fix it. I mean, that's the, that's the kind of, of, of approach that he's presenting right now, so.
Which means a lot to me from Bill, because you are very particular about lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And so for you to be comfortable with it, not to pick on you, but I know.
I get free gas, yeah.
No.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
A point of clarification. So what, if we vote on this, well, we will vote on it. Are we saying that lighting on a site shall be down directed? As stated in number two on page six of what you submitted, lighting on a site shall be down directed and activated only during refueling operations? Does that?
No, the.
This is the redraft.
So, thank you.
Down directed and night sky compliant.
Thank you. I better just wait last night. Okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
So these are the thirteen conditions that?
So we're voting on the draft and not on the other statements?
Correct.
Right.
And they, so one more question. And basically, the three concerns were environmental concerns, lighting and noise, traffic. Of course, there were a lot of road maintenance, um, comments, but those, you know, whenever commerce is increased, there's their subsequent taxes that usually pay for that increased, um, so I'm not worried about that. And, um, it's, um, and I also save a huge value to, um, just downtown and the truckers trying to fuel up and grind right in the summer. It's gotta be in the nightmare.
When you think of road maintenance, it actually in this situation might be less, because instead of driving all the way down the Gunflint, they're only stopping.
Gotta be a huge help for a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good project.
Okay, we have a motion, but any further discussion? Are we good? Okay, we've had a motion. Now we need?
A second.
We already have a second.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item is, uh, another interim use permit request from Tofti Homestead LLC. Uh, that's a planned unit development which has a LLC attachment to it. Uh, proprietor is Dennis Rizdal. Um, we saw at the May meetings, uh, the, the need for employee housing. Very, uh, hot plate issue in Cook County, and Cascade Lodge and Restaurant came in with, uh, interim use permit requests for two permanent facilities with the ability to establish a, a seasonal RV presence for employee housing, which is gonna take care of, I believe, uh, sixteen or seventeen seasonal employees at Cascade. Uh, Tofti Homestead has a similar crunch. They bring in sixty to seventy seasonal employees, and they have to find housing for all of them. Part of that PUD component is a residential, uh, facilities that, uh, take care of a lot of the employees that are there, but they still have a more pressing need. Two years ago, Dennis came in and asked for, uh, an ability to put in two parked trailers, which are more of a permanent solution, uh, and they house, I believe, uh, ten people, five in each of those, seasonally. He's looking just at a stopgap ability now to bring in, uh, an RV, um, with the intent of housing five employees, they're fairly large RVs, well-designed and that sort of thing, but only seasonally in, in intent, and also not as a permanent solution. So that's the big thing, and I think we, we saw that both in land services and at the planning commission, that there are, uh, issues as far as, uh, we don't want, and not that we're, we're being judgmental, but we don't need temporary solutions, we need permanent solutions. So the RV is looked at. Uh, Dennis said it would be no more than two years, um, or maybe it was five years. It might have been five years. That's my mistake. But it, it has to be, uh, connected into the septic system, so there won't be any issues there. A lot of it is just putting in five more beds to take care of people who take care of us, which is the tourism industry. So it, uh, very little discussion. Uh, Dennis has, has been involved with this, uh, and he's looking for permanent solutions, including revitalizing the Tofti Housing down at Birch Grove. Uh, so it's, there's a lot of irons in the fire here, and this is just, uh, one of them.
Okay, questions, comments on that? No, I think he's putting it up behind, or the area where he already has housing?
Yeah, it's up at the top of the PUD, up by where their wood cutting operation is.
And it's five units?
No, just one.
One, okay.
RV housing, five seasonal employees.
That's gonna be pretty big, an RV.
Yeah, it, it's got, uh, a, it's got two bedrooms. It's got a bunk, bunk bed facility. So there's two bunks in one bedroom, and then there's a queen bed in the second bedroom, so, you know, you could have, you know, singles and couples and
Would it be an RV or would it be like a?
It's an RV.
Tiny home?
It's an RV.
RV.
Yeah. Right.
Or they put bunks in them too.
Picture of it, I think.
In, in working with Dennis too, that we're establishing a, an RV permit on this. We aren't just saying, yeah, you can use this for housing. So he's got that constraint as well. He's gotta get an administrative RV permit, and he's agreed to that. The big thing is, is that it's going to be connected into the PUD's septic and water system, so it won't be, you know, a porta potty. It, it, it will have at least some of the creature comforts of, of home.
Electricity.
Yeah, electricity, some heat, but, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I'll just ask one more question. Seasonal meaning summer, I'm just assuming, but, um, because it, it won't have a lot of heat. An RV probably doesn't have heat or the insulation to be a year-round resource. Is that, that's, imagine his intention is to really take care of the overflow staffing in the summer?
Yes, and, and there are time constraints in the draft resolution. I believe it's like April thirtieth to October fifteenth. And Dennis agreed to that.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, okay. So we will wait for the appearance of Representative Eklund later. We'll move on to administrator news.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I have is, um, a job description update for the Director of Office of Emergency Management and Public Information. Um, this job has been worked on and was reviewed and approved, um, by the Personnel Committee, June nineteenth. So just looking for an approval on that or questions you have about that. We promoted that job from Emergency Management Director and being a, a sheriff's office employee to a department head level position last year. Um, I think it was in May last year that we did that. Uh, and then this is just, um, a reworking of the job description to make sure that it's consistent with the requirements. Two primary functions in the job summary, uh, to direct and administer the county emergency management program, and then to, um, admin- administer the county public information program. So I think the big thing that we did here is we cleaned up the jo- job summary and split it into those two primary categories. And then previously, this job description had a, had a laundry list of tasks that it did, and they were all, um, kinda combined and generalized into the ten, uh, essential functions and responsibilities.
Okay, comments, questions?
I'd like to, on all these different job things we have, we get this pay rate, one ninety to two ten. I'd like to actually see some numbers to these numbers. You know, this is pretty, I'd like to see, um.
Commissioner, I can, I can certainly share that with you. Um, administratively, the job description is, is one component. The grade is a second component, and then the wage scale that we have, that we approved as part of the contracts this past year is the third component of that, and I'd certainly, I, I can certainly provide that update to you individually or each of you so that you understand the context of that, but right now we're just looking at the, at the job description, and I can provide you with the additional details, so you know what that means.
I would, that would be great.
As, as a matter of fact, if, if you were to go onto the internet and look through the contracts, you would find all that information, because it's a part of a,
Yeah.
Um, it's a, it's appended to the, to the employee contract, so you already do have that information or access to that information, but I can share the context of that with you.
Do you want that for future then?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So are we ready to make a motion for this?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.
The second item is the one that I handed out this morning, which was the Capital Projects Bid Awards. I think you're all aware that we had a bid opening for the Community Center Park Projects on June seventh for the ice rink project and the warming house project, and that we also had a bid opening for the Hovland Public Works project last Thursday on June twenty-first. Generally, what I will say is, is that we authorized two point oh five four million dollars for capital projects, and with the bids that came in on these three projects and the other projects that we have scheduled as listed on the second page of that handout, we were over budget by almost four hundred thousand dollars. So, the long and the short of what I'm asking is that I'm asking you to grant us the authority to negotiate with the lowest qualified bidders to see if we can meet program goals, construction standards, and the financial constraints that we have, that we establish when we authorize the debt to get these projects done. What I'm showing on page two is, is that our budget was that we had two hundred, two point two seven four million dollars, including some additional funds for community center projects available, and we had planned two point two four three million dollars worth of projects. So, we had a little bit of a cushion to get these things done. Our bids that have come in on the playground, the skating rink, the warming house, and the public works facility have pushed us over by almost four hundred thousand dollars. So, if you look in the third column, you'll can see the targets are adjusted. And I'm not necessarily looking to meet any of the targets. I'm looking to be able to meet all of the targets in total, because we don't have any capital funds to put towards these projects other than the debt that we issued for these projects. So, we are actively working with the consulting architectural firm and the low bidders to negotiate, to value engineer these projects to the point that they meet our financial constraints. The other additional information that's, that's in the handout is the opinion of probable cost developed by Meyer Group for each of these three projects that we received bids on. And then following that, you'll see the actual bid tabulations of, for each of the three projects. On the last bid tab for the hockey, or the ice rink construction, we had an apparently low qualified bidder, and then we found out that their bid did not include one of the elements from the addendum, which was the subcontract with Becker Arena Products. So, we've had to make a change in who the low bidder was in our recommendation. Found that out late yesterday afternoon, and I just received a revised copy of the, of the bid spreadsheet at about twenty after eight this morning, so. On the Hovland Public Works building, the low qualified bidder is Gardner Builders. We had two bids to open. And you can see that the budgetary constraint we had with architectural and engineering and site work, we had allocated one point oh six million dollars, and our bid came into one point two nine million dollars. The Community Center Warming House low bidder was Crawford Excavating. And you can see that that bid was nineteen percent over our expected budget for the same project. And the Community Center Ice Rink, the low bidder now turns out to be Crawford Excavating, because their bid was consist, did, was comprehensive and did include the Becker Arena Products bid, and that bid was eight percent over. So, I will take discussion or answer your questions, because I know there's a lot of them. But eventually, what I'm gonna ask is either that you authorize us to negotiate with each of these low qualified bidders to get these projects done on the budget parameters that we have and/or reject the bids for each, any of these projects, but I'd like to do the projects individually. I do want us to negotiate the skating rink first, because we do have the settlement funds, and we have other funds that go toward that, and we've already authorized the forty-six thousand dollars payment towards Becker Products to refinish the boards this year. Then I would like us to negotiate to the Hovland Public Works facility because of the need for that project, and I think that we can get to our budgetary goals. And thirdly, we'd, we'd work on the warming house. And the reason that I'd hold the warming house off until third is that if we end up having to reject that bid, I think we still have the ability to go back and build that same project from a different type of construction. This is a commercial grade construction that's showing this amount of money. And if we went in and did that in a slab-on-grade stick tile, style construction, we'd still be able to do that within, and meet the budgetary guidelines. There's the biggest opportunity to reduce the scope of that project without changing the intended use of that space. So, questions people have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I was fairly privy to the community center conversations, but I wasn't there for the opening of the bidding, but it was, it was pretty shocking to the, to the board. And I think they're very much in favor of, of not going ahead with, but obviously we can't do that. But approving the bid and then allowing the administrator to negotiate, to meet, to meet the budget, the rink and warming house. And actually, in that process, I'm relieved that, because I don't think, in the process, any of them were really happy with doing a commercial-style building in this, for this use. So, in a way, it more matches the mindset of the people who are gonna be using it. So, I think there's some potential there to make a lot of people more comfortable with the process of the warming house in particular. The rink is the rink. There's only so much you can do with the rink, but, so, just that as a side note.
And just to expound on that, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we did meet with the Community Center Board on Friday to review all of these options to make sure that they, I didn't want them to be surprised by anything I presented to you today, because they've taken a significant amount of ownership in the development of those two projects.
Mr. Verchaim?
No questions. Appreciate your work on it. Start a moving target.
Well, as in most engineering firms, they will start off with the best. We might have to look at better, hopefully not any lower than that, but better probably in some situations here will be quite good. Commissioner Dukirk?
Sadly, this is the norm.
New reality.
Yep.
Longer we wait, the more expensive it gets.
The truth of, yeah, the truth of the matter is, is the bids coming in approximately twenty percent overestimated is good for our market right now, and that's an unfortunate truth.
Since times are good.
It does for the, it does for the contractors, and when I, when I put this in context of talking it through with the architect, I said, we could reject the bids and bid this again next year, but assume we get a lower bid by seven or eight percent on, and use the big project, the Hovland Public Works facility. We get a better price by seven or eight percent, because we get in on their construction plans earlier in the season, but we have a four to five percent materials increase. Then we have a three to four percent net gain, which means thirty to forty thousand dollars on a million dollar project. And if we have the ability to negotiate and get all of these programs accomplished with the money that we've already identified to accomplish these programs, then thirty thousand dollars might not be, we can't exceed the budget that we have. The two point oh five four is what we have, but the thirty thousand dollars on that project and the ability to work with the others to still accomplish the program might, might not stop us from moving forward.
And, I mean, we have a bid from Fridley. People are busy. It's just nuts.
And we have a local bidder too, which is good.
We do, but I mean, when you go out and look for bids, and I remember the YMCA bids, and we would get a handful of bids from Duluth, maybe one from St. Cloud, and you're looking at, you know, we have two, and one of them is six hours away, so.
Yeah, I think we, if we can negotiate him down to the, you know, we don't have no more money than we have. That's all there is to it.
We, we don't, and Plan B, of course, would be if we can't reach an agreement where we feel we've got a good balance between value and program, then we would have to reject the bids and go through a bid process again in February or reevaluate our process. Now, the, if you look at the second page with the, with the budget figures on it, the last set of rows says architectural and engineering and testing. That's the money we've, we've already committed. We're paying those bills one way or another, and if we go back to the drawing board on any of these projects, we're gonna incur additional costs in those areas. So, when we start balancing, potentially maybe, maybe saving thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars on a million dollar project, with the fact that we might have twenty or thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of additional architectural and engineering and oversight and bidding, it gets eaten up really quickly. So, I think our best opportunity is to negotiate with these bids that are relatively close to our program now.
Yeah, and that five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for a warming house is...
Well, that was, that was the best.
Don't be picking on our little warming house.
It's, and that's, I would explain, that's a little misrepresented, because the project includes landscaping and sidewalks, and it includes the architectural and engineering. It includes a lot of other stuff. The actual building itself is around three hundred thousand dollars out of that. And when you look at that, you go, oh, well, that makes a lot of sense.
It's still a lot.
And it, and it may be, well, three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet. Right now, even stick framing, I'm not sure that you can do a whole lot better than a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars a square foot of construction.
I haven't seen it.
So, I, that gets us down to the bare bones. The other options that we talked about were possibly doing something like One Roof is doing and bringing in a prefab building and set it on a slab. I mean, there are ways where we can change our construction standards on that project to get to a different budget level, which is the thing that allows us to free up and think about getting the rest of the projects accomplished. You'll note that the, the goals that I set, the targets that I set for each of these projects end up giving us a little bit of a cushion left here, and that's because we haven't bid the windows and the roof, and we know that we need to get those things done too. So, we need to leave a little bit extra. That eighty-five thousand shows about a twenty percent over budget item on those, on those additional projects, so.
A tiny house, warming house kinda pops into my head, but I can't imagine all those kids getting their gear off in a tiny house.
Well, the, and the fifteen hundred square foot also includes a single-stall garage for the Zamboni, so it's not fifteen hundred square feet for the warming house. Initially, the, the drawing was for twenty-five hundred square feet, and it had already been reduced in size to accommodate that, so. I think it's kind of a bare minimum of what it is that's gonna improve the program that we already have up there.
So, we haven't even got prices for the windows and roof here yet?
No. We have, we have, we have estimates.
Welcome to government.
So, maybe you need to save some more money up there to fix this bill.
We have estimates, and we're working with, remember, we, we set a contract for walled architects to do the, to manage that process for us and develop the specs and guidelines for that, so they'll be doing that yet this year. They're working on those now.
All right. So, if you need to adjust this motion, feel free. Motion to approve pending negotiation to our budgeted amount?
So, I think, I recommend that the board award bids for the following projects, contingent on the successful value engineering process to meet fiscal constraints, grant authority to administer capital to sign or reject contracts after financial considerations, and take each of the items individually.
That motion.
Any further discussion?
We need a, yeah, we need a second before we can discuss more.
Okay. We had a second?
Jan seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, passed.
Exactly what Jeff said.
So, I really honestly, I would like to have three motions and three seconds and three votes.
On each one?
So, the first one apply to the Hovland project?
Okay.
Thank you, Stacy. That's, that is what I was intending.
Do I amend my motion, or the first motion is the Hovland building?
Just, just append the first motion to be the Hovland project.
Okay, so I amend my motion to be the Hovland project. Commissioner Severson, do you agree?
Second. All in favor? The second one would be the Community Center Warming House.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor? And the third one is the Community Ice Rink.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Okay, so we have three separate ones. Thank you.
Just because each of the bids stand out, and each of the bids may be awarded to somebody separate, although at this point, we have two of them, the low bidder being a local contractor.
I vote we have anti-nausea medication during these discussions.
We welcome the bringers. Okay, that finishes administrator report then?
Unless anyone has questions, yes.
Then we'll move on to our commissioner concerns, reports, meetings, notes, all of that. Everybody have any concerns, reports? Okay, so, I'm going to be doing the WTIP interview today, because we've had a chance to review our past, going on WTIP after our board meetings. And with the new director there, Jeff and I got together last week with Joe and Matt, and we discussed just how can we look at the importance of all of us going there after our meeting when sometimes it kind of ends up to be review of what we've already talked about. And then we looked at who does go to WTIP for representing the county in terms of, Jeff goes there and talks about administration, Valerie goes there, Public Health and Human Services go, and Kristen now goes from the Highway Department. And so, we thought, well, those are the basics that are being covered in the county, and maybe we need to look at our reporting in terms of if there's some huge area that needs a little bit better explanation from the board, that we would do that occasionally. So, that's where we're kinda going right now, that we would not do a weekly report or a board report after, after our meeting. And in discussing it with Joe and Matt, we thought that might be a good direction to go. So, any opinion or...
So, we're not doing it every week, but this week, you're going to let the public know what the changes are.
Then we're not gonna do it anymore.
Well, I mean, they have most of the information that they put out today, and then you're on tomorrow morning reiterating it, and so it's, you know, I get the evolution of this.
The truth is, is since the commissioners are not doing a live interview with Jay during the morning like they were, and it's being a recorded interview and a summary of the board meeting, and from a news perspective, they've developed the ability to do the summary of the board meeting anyway. What they're really looking for is, you know, if, if, if the board wants to take action about supporting or denying approval for the border, border route. They're looking for commissioners to come in and talk about specific items. We're gonna be, bids are gonna be out for County Seventeen project. When we get those bids in and we talk about doing that improvement, that's a project that we're gonna wanna talk about from, from the commissioner's standpoint. So, they, what they're looking for is not just a summary, because they've, they've already developed that, and it's become kinda redundant, but what they are looking for is the interaction between the commissioners and the public on the items that are most important to you. And so, they're looking for, they're looking for ideas on what those things are, and they're willing to take those from you as commissioners or the public, or Valerie and myself on a weekly basis are summarizing the, the things that have happened in the recent weeks and things that we know that are coming up in the next few weeks and, and things we wanna make sure people have enough information about. So, we'll also be feeding them ideas for topics. But their goal is to, is to bring the commissioners to talk more about the impact of county policy and program on, on, on the constituents.
Makes sense. Makes sense.
So, Joe did reach out to me on the border to border route because of my being vocal during the meeting, and I did tell him that I would be offering a resolution once a time, so I've always wondered how do we do that when individually we are asked to speak on WTIP about things as commissioners? Do we have a policy or protocol, like, do, should I ask the chair if that's okay with her, or do we just continue as we have?
Well, I would not want to restrict any commissioner's access to the media or to the constituency, that's not our authority. But if we look through our communication guidelines and our communications plans, they do suggest that we run them through our communications director. So, um, between myself or Valerie and the weekly meetings that we're having, you know, the things that you think are important, that if a commissioner believes there's something that we're not communicating adequately, we need to know that. So, running it through myself and Valerie, um, or even just Joe talked to me, and we had this, we recorded this conversation, and I just thought you would wanna know. I'm not even that concerned about which side of the notification or that, which side of the event that's on. If it's important to one commissioner, it's probably important to the rest of you. So, if, if we roll out the communication standards, it kinda says that we want them to go through our communications director. Um, so somehow or another, let's find a way to have that conversation.
So I'll include you when I send Valerie emails to put out a PSA about people taking over the road on motorcycle drivers, which I did say.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you, I'm here. I, um, we're still on employee concerns, Commissioner.
Oh, yes.
Meetings and things. Um, I just wanted to comment on last night's, um, celebration of the fortieth anniversary of Sato Mountain Clinic, and, um, I know, um, many of, many of you were there for the annual meeting, which lasted about like two minutes or seven minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, but the, and I got there a little bit late for the, for the, um, celebration, the, um, presentation, but it was really, really well done, and it, um, um, forgetting her name, forgetting a lot of people's names, but, but the, um, the doctor, what's her name in the beginning, um?
Stover.
Yeah, Doctor Stover. She was so good in bringing that huge book, um, that weighty, weighty book compared to her cell phone that she had in her pocket, um, as to how, how she started in the world of medicine, and, um, her presentation was excellent. It was great hearing from Teresa and Hartley on how, um, health affects every avenue of Cook County, and, um, where, and where it's been through all the avenue, through all the areas of Cook County, and in many areas that, the, the work of the the county passing, um, a lot of the community health projects to the clinic to be handled professionally. Um, just the history of that over the past twenty, thirty, forty years was interesting, and then the finale with Doctor McDonald's and that healthcare is not a privilege, it's a right, and he brought that loud and clear at, um, two points during the celebration, and, um, as Rita mentioned on the radio this morning, I think he got a standing ovation, it was not real clear, but, um, it was, he was very passionate about it, and that's really interesting that, that he was the oldest, and at the beginning of this forty-year journey, and, um, that that is coming loud and clear at this moment in time. The other part that I thought was really interesting is what Rita brought up on the radio, is that the federally, the federal healthcare centers were established in nineteen sixty-five, and it was a Band-Aid, um, to, um, create, to make sure that there was healthcare in rural communities, um, or small, just small healthcare centers, um, that, so that people would have access to healthcare as a stopgap measure, because universal healthcare was right around the corner. Nineteen sixty-five, that was the creation of.
Oh, like our housing projects was gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah, but nineteen sixty-five is a little bit further back than forty years in our housing projects. But, um, it's just phenomenal to me to be here today and to, to look back at the climate in nineteen sixty-five, and universal healthcare was right around the corner, and now it's like so far, so far from me, it's, it's just, it's kind of, I don't know, depressing, really depressing.
Thanks, Jan.
But, but, I mean, the beauty of the, our particular clinic has, has, um, because we've had extremely talented people, and diligent people, and committed people, and, um, Rita puts in, um, many, many, many hours, um, in her, um, tenure.
And travel.
And travel, and just, um, doing grants, et cetera, that she's been able to keep those grants coming and, um, maintaining the level of service that we've, um, grown quite used to because it is our right, not a privilege. I just think it's kind of a beautiful thing. So that's the upside, we've been able to maintain, um, but that the community health centers were, were only a stopgap because universal healthcare was just right around the corner. Very disturbing, very disturbing of our history, I'd say.
So there's only one downside.
But it's a pretty big downside.
It's a big one.
Yeah, it's a pretty big downside.
It was a lovely evening, really. Okay, yes.
Yes, uh, I left that meeting early to attend a early childhood coalition, uh, meeting, and I've attended that representing the YMCA, and, because we're a childcare provider, but it's a group of childcare providers, in-home providers, as well as cooperation station and some staff from our, uh, Public Health and Human Services. And so, uh, I, I think that based upon that meeting, I would like to bring up, uh, in a conversation with, uh, Representative Eklund today, that, you know, this is a real regional concern, and that came up loud and clear at that meeting, so hopefully that there could be some kind of legislative process or more attention given to this. So I might ask that question today, what's happening?
Okay.
Just wanna brief you on that.
Let's get all our questions and comments ready for Rob when he's here at eleven AM, hopefully. Okay. No further business? Motion to adjourn.
Uh, do we recess, or do we?
Are we gonna, we're gonna recess, right?
Recess till eleven?
Yeah, you'd wanna recess.
Until eleven?
Yeah. Yeah, when Rob's here.
Okay. Okay. You'll be back. So everything you said might not go there.
So then, I think the camera will run until Rob gets here, they're just gonna be at that space, so. So, the camera and the microphones are running until we're.
Sure, okay. There you go. Trying to think of his name. He, uh, he does the, uh, foundation.
Northland?
Northland, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe he would be something that they just awarded, and Suzie's addition on her child here in Duluth.
No, that came up last night too. The money is available, but probably.
And it's just for people to do it.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, where the legislative issue is, that we've got so strict for a small or local area, we really have a difficult, uh, we sort of know and want, but.
Okay.
And we got the funding, but certainly, it's a sole issue of finding people to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, and, uh, you know, we have to, I think we have to, uh, home providers.
Is there daycare closing?
Yes.
Yeah, one is, yeah.
A few children right there.
Yeah.
What are those people?
Well, and you know, another thing that I learned last night was, you know, I think that there's sort of a waiting list to get infants in homes, because you know that nice little small setting, but they can't take them. And some parents are reluctant to go up to the big Y, I mean, that's a big place, and, you know, and, um, we have some openings there, but, so that's another whole issue.
Yeah.
You know, probably have work around that.
You do that, yeah.
I don't know. I guess, uh, I think the legislature, I, I was sort of asked last night to make sure about it up.
Okay. I'll remind you.
I gotta get this. Hello, this is my room. Hi, good, how are you? Sure. Oh, you mean today? No, it doesn't make any difference to me, no. Yeah, no, I'm in a, I, I just got out of a, a board meeting, county board meeting, so I don't even know if I'm gonna get there, um. No, and I might just stop in. I've got an hour break before we, uh, adjourn again, but no, and there's some, I, I, I was gonna buy some up and go, but, um, there's something on there if you wanna do that today, or do it some other time too, with that wax, yeah. Okay. Sure, no, I, I have no problem with that, just thank you for calling, and, no, you can come and go, unless, you know, it's good to call just in case something's going on here, but. No, no. No, no. Well, thanks for calling, yeah, no problem. I, okay, you can just, yep, bye.
What's WTIP?
Oh, I got it here.
I had it.
I think that's a good plan. I'll come up way down on here. Three eight seven, ten seventy.
Ten seventy, okay.
Is the camera still on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just curious.
Well, I'm gonna take one load of papers to the car. Gosh, I've been going through my stack of papers, and it's like.
So I got a question, when the camera's still on, do people, they have to leave it on?
Um, Jeff says it's.
Shut it off and then turn it on again?
Jeff says there's no real way to pause it, uh, without disrupting the
Recording.
The, the YouTube event. If he stopped it and then started it again, there would be no event associated with the second recording, so it's a something we have.
That could be an hour gap of time on someone's view. Interesting.
Well, it was easier to move the camera then, I, I, that would be a question for Jeff. I wonder if you can just go up there and.
Yeah, I have an idea. Uh, we have public for safety and transportation.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
This is probably a good place to get some work done.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'll just leave that. See you later.
Okay. Wow, that water tastes bad.
Chlorine.
Yeah. Hello? Mm-hmm. Okay, hold on. Oh, Bobby, I, um, I, he did not seem very interested.
Oh, Bobby, I, um, I, he did not seem very interested. Hi. So, uh, uh, so Dr. Smyce said that we would
Yeah.
Okay, sir, I asked this David about time length of the meeting. That that I could always do that to happen. Uh, here's the time I had to have uh, that I guess was there a plan to kind of have uh, any like time on the location that could be impact for that and that they profit for that as a part of the.
Well, if you said available.
Okay.
It's different. I mean, I have something that you're doing on this. It was so far as you have to.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, sir, I was just saying.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I mean, we were very close, I mean, and then they all had this matter. They were like, oh, probably commentary, they did all that as uh, as I mentioned. All proven, they're not, they're not really uh, that they're. As. But I mean, it's not difficult, probably, but maybe if they're gonna be aware of this, if there's a, if there's a little bit of planning issue with the plan, uh.
There's a lot of boundaries on what's going on.
Yeah, exactly, so it's just gonna be matter of like, if that's the issue in the plan, uh, do I think that an annual or another, will it take a combination for replacement plan, uh, really good at all, so. Yeah. Sure. Sure. Okay. Okay, I know that, uh, I know that signal that it's.
Okay, you're good.
Okay.
He's on his phone in his car.
I guess this will be a more formal presentation by Rob, otherwise last year we sat around at a big table, but since he's on the agenda.
Yeah, Bobby mentioned that if we should, I wonder if the, if you wanted to do the format like last year, I wonder if that our camera would, could just be swivel.
Um, what do you think? I think since he's on the agenda.
Yeah, we.
We probably should be here, because last year we had folks from the community too.
We want to have him sit here.
Yeah.
So he can be seen, otherwise it's just a voice.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Just thought.
Okay.
Does that thing swivel?
I don't think so.
Did you go out there and just? It swivels, we can do it from all of the year, but it's all preset, otherwise you've got somebody that's got to have to be man. And then we're back to.
Right.
Yeah.
We're back to having a person that will be sitting here.
Pretty good, how you doing?
I'm doing all right.
So, no Verizon for a few years. Lots of identity now, because I mean, it's which my girls are, T-Mobile, so.
Yeah, yeah, actually the big one up now is T-Mobile.
They're moving along.
Everywhere.
Up here?
Yeah, well, they're in Portland and, um, they're adding service in, um, they're over Grand Avenue, they're adding service in, they're in, they're in Schroders, and they're moving to Husker.
Right.
So they're gonna jump on it before the three years, it's kinda interesting.
Yeah, probably, subsidiate me a few.
I thought it was Sprint they were looking at.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is sort of interesting to see who, who jumps on it and who doesn't, where they jump on it and then they back off.
Yeah, 'cause I got a call at work the other day, and I got it.
There are boys, you have these in the building.
Hello, how are you guys today?
Good, how are you?
Morning.
You've been a tourist today.
Little bit, I went and had one of those, we're doing this already. That's the man, the first stop.
You have to go back and act as being.
Yeah, is that your first, was that your first stop?
Yep, that was my first stop, so.
Of course, we have the world's best.
How you doing?
What do you have best up there?
Everything.
You too, how's campaigning going?
It's good, it's going.
Yeah.
I just had knee surgery last Monday, so I.
I was just gonna say, you look like you haven't had any surgery.
It's just a arthroscopic, so.
So just scrape, little scrape, not replacement?
Clean up some arthritic spurs and, but they, uh, they told me there's not enough cartilage left there to do much with, so it'll be a knee replacement sooner or rather than later, so.
Sooner, like within the year?
I'll find, I gotta go back to see the surgeon on July third, and we'll get a little better idea then.
Before you reveal more.
I would just remind you that in Cook County, our meetings are always televised.
Yeah.
Well, they're way on TV right now.
Yeah, good point.
Good point, also, let's go into the rest of them.
Good point, we should have warned you right before.
How you doing, my friend?
Yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Yes, true.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, forty-five minutes, I forgot. That were televised, oh, for the whole thing.
My wife doesn't like my answer on the knee surgery, I'm thinking sooner rather than later, I'm thinking right after your season would be a great time.
Okay, oh yeah, oh, surprise, surprise.
Is this where you want me?
Yep. Yep, in the hot seat.
In the hot seat, okay.
A little bit, yeah, I gotta push, okay.
Rob, have you been involved in any discussions on the child care issues around the state, especially in the district?
Myron, could you wait until we have everyone here?
Sure.
So that we could all hear the discussion?
I'll bring that up later.
All right. You know, trying to think of it.
Yeah, good, that's why I mentioned it.
Did you find more things for me to sign? Okay. Mm-hmm, okay.
Don't miss that event, Jen.
I know, I keep looking at this, I'm thinking, oh wait, that was last night, yeah, can let that one go now, the past events. Our clinic had a celebration last night of forty years.
Oh, okay.
Cook County.
New new hospital looks great from the pictures I've seen, uh, rehab and stuffs.
I just wish the funding would come in a little bit longer than shorter all the time.
Rural hospitals, it's a struggle all the time.
Yeah.
We've got the International Falls Hospital, uh, Rayleigh Medical Center, has had three surgeons in the last two years.
But you do surgery.
They do, they do some minor surgery.
So you can, so you can have babies. So you can have babies.
Not Rob particularly, but.
Yeah.
Hey, Rena.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Nice to see you.
How are you? I never looked at the front. No, it's pretty, see, it's right up your alley.
It is.
Yeah. And scotia and coles and. Wow, you can name them and everything.
Hey, Bob.
Rob.
How are you?
Pretty good, how you doing?
Good, thanks for setting that second thing up today.
We're good to go.
Yeah.
You got through all the road construction okay, or do you?
Yeah, there was, um, when we turned on sixty-one from Highway one, there's some, it looks like a mill and overlay or something going on there.
Beaver Bay has it, Two Harbors.
Yeah, so I didn't go through any of that.
You missed that. No.
We take the forest highway over and then.
Yeah.
So you didn't come in. I was just gonna say, why didn't you come in on Air Force One?
How many hours does it take you to get here from International Falls?
About four, if you do a MapQuest, it says four hours and four minutes, but that's of course driving exactly the speed limit, so.
So you can make it in four? You go four minutes faster?
Drive less than the speed limit.
Oh.
Sometimes you have to, especially if there's road construction. When I take that cut across to Finland, um, Black Cyclone. And you don't have to go through Silver Bay.
Yeah, I, I go to Virginia quite often, I've gotta go to International Falls for an end club meeting.
Oh.
No, you know.
In August, so.
That's at Woodcabbalix, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, he, he's still there.
I'm gonna be there, if you're cooking Rayleigh Northern Pike, I'm gonna be there for that.
Yeah, we're gonna, I guess it's gonna be on a boat or something, yeah.
Yeah, he'll get you on a boat ride and stuffs.
Well, I'm gonna go over there and stay at night before, because that's a long drag to get to there by nine.
Oh, yeah. Okay, well, it's eleven o'clock, and he's right Johnny on the spot here, so we'll reconvene our board meeting and welcome Representative Eklund to our meeting today.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. So do you want me to just go?
Go.
Go.
The legislative session was a flop. Um I'll I'll be blunt and that's what I told everybody. It was um when when you have, well, first off, let's let's do what we got done right. I'll I'll do that first, so. We passed a pension bill, which will be good for our school districts because the pension bills will shore shore up the bottom line for, and and for some for the counties and cities and stuff too, because you have county or employees that are on, that'll be taking part of the pension. So we stabilized the pension plan, which will be good for the bottom lines for most government units because they won't have to worry as much about the pension liabilities going down the road. That being said, I heard from some constituents who weren't happy with the pension bill being passed either because the early early retirement incentive that was there is no longer there for uh public employees. Uh that doesn't, I don't believe that means that uh the county boards or the city councils or whatever couldn't negotiate in their contracts some kind of early retirement incentives, but that would be, that would be using county or city funds or whatever, school district funds to do that. But it was something that needed to be done because um the pension funding was in bad shape, so it needed to be taken care of. I think probably the first group that'll see the biggest benefit from it will be the schools um down the road when they're when they're doing their next year's budgeting. Got the contract bills done, uh contracts done for the state employees. That was a, that was a good thing. Um the majority party right now, uh and I apologize if I get too polit- political or partisan here, but the majority party for some reason does not like public employees. And for me personally, I know I like to have my roads plowed and if I need to call an ambulance, that I know the ambulance can make it to my house and that sort of thing. The essential public services that need to be done. So I mean, can there be, can can fixes be made? Can uh can uh advances be made to make things better? Absolutely. But we do not need, we do need our public employees because you can't, I don't believe a private company could uh contract and do what they've done. In Cooshen County, when I was on the board, we tried that. We tried to private privatize part of our highway department and it did not work. It got more and more expensive and eventually we opened another highway garage and hired two uh two uh county employees to do the roads out in the rural part of one, part of Cooshen County. So that being said, uh moving on, we uh got a a decent uh bonding bill passed. They say uh the the general ob- obligation part of the bonding bill is eight hundred and twenty-five million. The the state has bonding capacity of about three point two billion, so it certainly could've been bigger. But by the same token, eight hundred and twenty-five million puts a lot of people to work and puts a lot of projects like the Grand Murray Harbor uh on online. It's gonna cost, it's gonna cost a little bit of money. Hopefully, we can either figure out how to do it locally or come back on the, on some kind of supplemental bill to help out with the rest. But to get as many projects as we in, they all had in the bill as we could, they all had to take a little bit of a haircut. For District Three A, the bonding bill, we got the Grand Murray Harbor, we got Black Beach at Silver Bay, we got a campground on Birch Lake at Babbitt, we got four million dollars for um uh some more build outs of the new Sudan, uh Lake Vermillion State Park. Uh so, I mean, there's a fairly fairly significant amount of money that that came to this district out of out of that bonding bill. So we're happy for that. Of course, we want, we wanted more. You always want more, but you do what you can. So that was the successes, as far as I'm concerned. Um the failures were when the Republican Party, the majority party, felt that the governor had to do a tax conformity bill. So they extended out some some tax cuts, two and three years out past one or two-year budgeting session. And we budget, we'd do a two-year budget for the state budget. They put in what's called tails, which is obligations out past the the uh budget cycle and figuring that the governor had to have tax conformity. Well, the governor's in the last year, he didn't have to have anything and and he vetoed it. And um I think uh a lot of us legislators or whoever's there next year after the dust settles on November sixth, uh we're we're gonna catch a lot of grief when people go to do the taxes because with the state not conforming to what the came out of the uh the federal tax bill, there's gonna be some, gonna be some issues and and uh we'll see what happens there. But life goes on. We didn't have to have a tax bill. We will have a tax bill next year. That's required. Um there'll have to be a tax bill that'll come out in the next section and we'll see what happens there. Uh the the rest of the bills that got all rolled into one big omnibus bill is the wrong way, the wrong way to do business. If I could've voted for, for instance, in the in the in the other big supplemental budget bill, we had jobs in energy that had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Cook County, Cook County Higher Ed. I could, I would've voted for that bill as a standalone bill. We had uh a bunch of ATV trail money in the environment bill for some ATV trails that down in the Crane Lake area. I could've voted for the environment bill on its own. Uh but when they rolled five, five supplemental budget bills all into one, there was some some bills in there. There's, there was enough stuff that did not good things for the, as far as I'm concerned, for uh social services, for uh other parts of county government, city government. Um I couldn't vote for that bill. They still passed and the governor vetoed them. So I would overall say that the legislative session was was a failure in my in my position. And uh it's it's tough to be in that spot. That being said, I can't, you can't entirely blame the majority party because about six years ago, when the Democrats were in in charge of the legislature, they tried the same thing and I believe Governor Plante vetoed a lot of those bills. So it's it's been tried before. Nothing is new under the sun. Hopefully, it's a lesson learned and next year we have enough time where we can vote on individual parts of the budget and then do the whole budget as one after after those bills are passed. But for instance, the tax bill came out that we voted on for tax conformity, nine hundred and eighty pages. It came out three hours before we had to vote on it. Well, I found out that you would have to read approximately two thousand words a minute to be able to read, to read a nine hundred and eighty-page bill in time to even have a comprehension of what may have been in that bill. So when we got them, and nine hundred pa- eighty pages, that's two reams of paper. So we gotta, got the bill, everyone got on their desks, and then you you just have to rifle through and try to find out the stuff that you had in there. Like I had, uh, we had something in there for Schroder Township. Was it Schroder or Schrader? I never.
Schroder.
Schroder, okay. There's, the reason I ask is there's some Schraders up in the falls and they spell it the same way, so. Gotta make sure I'm pronouncing it right depending on where I'm at. But anyway, um for their historical society, that they could use some of their tax levy money to start to fi- uh finance their local historic society. And we've been trying since I've been down there to get that little thing in the in the bill and we had it in this year, but then the the governor vetoed and I actually voted against the bill when it came out because, but not because of that, just because of a lot of the other stuff that was in there, so. With that, I'm the bearer of uh not very good tidings, I guess, but we did do some stuff for Cook County anyway. And uh uh the LCCM R Bill passed, there's some uh, there's some money in that for uh the Get You Gammy Trail and things like that. So there's some money that did come back to County in in different different places, but it's not, it wasn't nearly as good a year as as we were hoping for, so. With that, I'm open to any any kind of questions that you might have.
Okay, yes. So another thing that didn't pass was some additional funding for the border-to-border route. Do you see that moving ahead?
Is that the um Commissioner, is that the uh off-highway vehicle thing? That's gonna be a touchy one. I I think it'll go in fits and spurts. I could see it moving from the west to the east versus the east to the west, to tell you the truth, as far as um where it can be, where it can be run. We get up in this part of the, this part of the world and um you start dealing with a lot of other people that have a lot of different groups that have big concerns over that kind of stuff. I think eventually you'll see it, the off-highway group folks are are, they're a large organization. And and um I I believe if it's done right, it can be a, it could be a a good thing for for people, but it's, we gotta make sure we do it right. And and you know, the off-highway vehicles, they're they're like any other uh recreational group. There's a percentage that are kind of black sheep or that ruin it for everybody else, but most of them are law-abiding and rule-abiding and they're gonna do the right thing. So I think if we do it right, we can make it uh, make it a good uh extra um boost to our tourism industry, but it's gotta be done right. I, it it'll move, eventually it'll move.
Funny you say that, 'cause I do drive my Jeep, which is an OHV with a label on the back tire that says Black Jeep in the family, so.
I'm aware of that, Commissioner. That's why I was wondering if I should use a black sheep term or not.
And I do bring a garbage bag with me and clean up, so I'm not the troublemaker.
Well, and and that's the thing, you know, I, when you say that, I I can remember, I don't camp in Canada anymore, but I used to when when it was a lot easier to go over there. And and uh I can, I can remember going to a common campsite that that everybody used and everybody respected. And that one year we got there and it was so full of garbage, and this is a place that you had to portage. So my little twelve-foot boat that we carried with a six-horse motor on it, when we came back, we had two of those hefty garbage bags, uh the big, the big uh commercial size, full of other people's crap that we portaged out just 'cause it was so disgusting when we got there. We picked it all up and threw it in garbage bags and then the little twelve-foot boat looked like I was really hauling a load. Luckily, it was mostly beer cans and pop cans that we picked up. So we gotta respect, respect what we're doing, but uh and respect everybody else's form of entertainment too.
It's interesting you mention Canada, 'cause now I recall when you go to the, to events with the Jeep in Canada, there's a concern of dirt between our two countries, and so if you have a dirty Jeep coming back, they want you to clean it before you cross the border, so that's interesting. I forgot about that.
Invasive species.
Yep. Thank you.
Early childhood issues and we had a meeting last night here locally called the Early Childhood Coalition. It's a group of uh home providers, the YMCA's involved in another uh cooperation station, and some county people and Y people. And we're, we're trying to, you know, we can get funding, but the challenge that we're having is trying to find solutions that we can work here locally, but they don't fit, you know, the big picture of the rules and regs. And and I think last night we had a real great uh session about how to help our home providers. But, you know, we're, we're tied on how we can do with it. So I guess my question is, has there been talk at the legislature or do you think there will be in the future about, you know, some of this uh good intentions and everything, but unintended consequences about some of our rules and regulations, especially as it relates to rural, you know, counties?
There'll probably be some, Commissioner, but I I um, I don't know how many of you have been following this uh, this um daycare issue that's been going down in the cities where there's supposedly large fraud and money leaving the country and and uh maybe kids registered that aren't actually taking part in the programs and all that kind of stuff. So I think your e- early childhood funding through DHS and other things, they're probably gonna face more scrutiny rather than less for the next few years. Some of it, um especially when you look at what may be happening down in the Twin Cities area with some of our minor- more minority groups and and immigrant groups, it it may just, it may be justified. I don't know. We're gonna have to see, uh whether whether it's justified or whether it's, whether it's a uh a witch hunter or whatever you wanna say and and uh, so I think on on early childhood stuff like that for for daycare, you're gonna probably face more scrutiny down the road just because of those type of things until we get that straightened out. And and uh I don't believe that that is gonna be a party issue, no matter who's in charge after after November sixth. I think it's something that that right, wrong, or otherwise is ne- needs to be addressed and is gonna need to be um, we're gonna have to get to the bottom of it. I don't, from what, from my understanding, I don't think it's as as big an issue as some are making it out to be, but it's still an issue. Anytime there's fraud in taxpayer dollars that are being affected, uh we need to get to the bottom of it and find out what's going on with it.
Thank you.
Another part of early childhood that I'm fully in favor of, not so much of the daycare stuff, is uh uh fully funding pre-K through through grade twelve. I think it's uh, I've, I've been in in the programs and watched what these young kids are doing in the school and I and I uh I truly believe that that's, that is the way of the future. These, these kids are ready to learn and they're uh, and we're finding out through uh, through uh studies and stuff like that that uh there's no reason that four-year-olds can't take car- take part in a pretty aggressive education program and get them, get them going the right, right uh direction. And that'll take some of the pressure off our um daycare and other things if if some of these kids are in a school setting.
So Rob, that kind of goes back to the black sheep, so there's some bad eggs. Can we make sure to include our people in our rural regions when the conversation comes up about being more strict?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Yep.
So can you interpret that for the rest of us? What's more strict mean?
When he says that there is some cor- corruption going on and that the regulations may need to be stricter than they currently are, well, I don't know that we have that level of corruption here, and to make things more difficult means that we have a larger problem when it comes to having daycare, so, you know, always include the people from this. And and I don't think that people in rural communities would be opposed to being more strict in order to make sure that children and families are safe, but doing it in a manner so that they can continue to do their jobs.
Well, and and one of the things I'd like to, what I, what I'd like to see, especially since uh corporations have been given such generous tax breaks and tax cuts and all this kind of stuff with the latest tax bill, I would like to see a little bit more of a European model on some of this stuff where industry partners with local groups to get some of these daycares and things set up that are needed so their employees can go to work and and function. And and uh, I mean, a a prime example, and when my, when my children were born, my my twins, my wife teaches at a Catholic school, so the salary she was making at the time, we would use her salary to pay daycare. So she, so she resigned, and for three years she ran a daycare daycare at our house until it drove me so crazy. I said, I'll wash dishes, I'll do laundry, I'll cook supper, you go back to work, please.
We'll break even.
Um uh during that time, I t- I approached the company I worked for and said, have you ever thought of a daycare on the premises? And they, they told me, yes, they had, but with the chemicals and such that it takes to make paper, they could not assume the liability of number one, evacuating employees if they need to, and number two, evacuating children if they need to, to accommodate a daycare on the premises. So they, for for liability issues, they wouldn't, didn't consider it. That doesn't mean that down the road they couldn't consider helping set up a daycare for their employees off-site somewhere where where you would know. And I, and I'm just using a local thing as an example, but I I think nationwide, and especially in in uh my district and the adjoining districts, we have a severe day daycare shortage in northern Minnesota of of qualified places to take people. And there's too many grandmas and grandpas and aunts and uncles that are taking care of kids, not that they don't do a fine job, but um it's, it's tying them down and and a lot of grandmas and grandpas and aunts and uncles have already raised one family and they're ended up getting stuck raising another one because people have to work to provide for their families too, so, I mean, it's a tough situation.
So what about a, what about a program to help funding for like county government? When you say a business should provide daycare, well, for us, we've had staff ask for county government to provide daycare for a lot of our staff. Well, you know, as a commissioner, then you're talking about taxpayer funding to do that. And so wrap that around your former commissioner head and then use your legislative powers to figure out how we can make that happen without offending. There's a project for you.
I know, I know how that wo- would work in my former com- commissioner position, and it wouldn't. And it's partly because our, our counties are so big and diverse. How do you do something for Grand Murray when you can't do the same thing for Schroder Township?
I want you to do it for the whole entire state of Minnesota.
Yeah, okay.
Book a program and fund it. Just, just like that.
Okay. I'll get right on that. But it, but it is a, it is a tough situation and and uh actually, the IRRB right now, we have a work group that's looking at how to provide better daycare across the region. And and it's uh, we're, we're grappling with a big issue that's, that's not, not easy to get a handle on.
If I could just add too, part of the discussion was some of our larger employers, you know, were, are thinking about how how they can help. And and just to reiterate, you know, when we brainstorm about what we can do to help, we end up with this staffing issue. And and just to reiterate, you know, when we brainstorm about what we can do to help, we end up with this staffing issue. And and we we're limited, or we have a lot of turnover. And you know, somehow we could get some kind of flexibility, not to lower standards, but to maybe supplement, you know. One of the suggestions that came up uh for some of our home daycares was, they could just have someone that would rotate around and help them. You know, or even relieve them at times so they could take care of their other business, cause they gotta run that. So that's what I was alluding to, if the some kind of flexibility could be allowed for those kinds of situations where we could have support staff.
And and we are working on that type of thing Commissioner, um I I received a call from a uh one of the only daycare providers in Ely. And they're allowed so much time off, uh free time, I can't remember, there's a technical term for it, I can't remember what it is. But if they have to run to the grocery store to pick up supplies, even though. Even though they're fully staffed and legally or whatever, but uh one person has to leave, the owner has to leave to do that. That's that hour or that two hours or whatever it is that they're picking up supplies is considered part of their free time. And the free time is supposed to be actually time away from work where you can recreate or relax or take a nap or whatever it is you would need to do. And uh they're real for, they didn't realize that till they got dinged by DHS on it, that that actually documenting the time that they run to the grocery store. Was not to their advantage, so we we I have turned that over to our research folks and we're looking to see if there's a some kinda, cause. You know, if you gotta go pick up a box of Cheerios, you shouldn't be dinged for having to go pick up a box of Cheerios, that doesn't make sense.
They're getting burned out.
Yep, exactly.
And the unintended consequences of the preschool um is really taking away their moneymakers um in a way. So um the the daycares can't survive without that age group. So they really struggle with, you know, because for babies or one to two, the 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 um um. Much stricter rules and they need way more staff per child. So the three to five year olds at least offered some um sustainable um income. So it's, that certainly isn't the intended consequence of of creating these preschools, which I think are a great thing. But if that could be thought about in the whole picture of what daycares really need to.
You can take care of more more four year olds than you can two year olds.
Exactly.
By standards, I I realize that too, so that's a it's a tough situation.
Yeah.
How did uh the LCCMR do?
LCCMR, we we uh, let's see, what did we get? Or well, LCCMR, we we did get some, in the last bill, we got, I think about two million dollars for the Get Your Gammie Trail project. We did a uh invasive cattail project up in Voyagers National Park where they're chopping up the invasive cattails. I have to remember, it's a pretty cool thing, I I gotta get out, I gotta get on the boat and watch it real close in operation. But they actually actually dig the roots up, run them through a shredder and shred them up. And then they, I don't know if they put them on ground or on land or whatever they do, but they're uh.
They shred them without the tops?
What's that?
They shred them without the tops, cause they'd make big puffballs.
Well, they do it, they do it.
And create more seeds.
Yeah.
They 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 were doing it, it it's a terrible time of year to do it, they're doing it late October. And so it's the the seed stuff is done then.
Yep.
And uh and they shred it and I was just up at uh Voyagers National Park for a grand opening for a new kayak and canoe launch thing. Cause the only place they had to launch kayaks and canoes is the same ramp as where the boats put in, and it gets um sometimes a little congested and and unruly. And uh the results of them chopping the invasive cattails is there's already more muskrat activity than they'd had in the past. And and you need muskrats to take care of the cattails and other stuff, and then hopefully wild rice will start growing. So with that going on, uh this year for uh Grand Portage, I believe you have a moose study in this year's bill. Uh I've got a little rule of thumb, anything north of Highway two gets my highest priority, so don't worry about that one, we'll get that one in there, so. For it's 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 a uh, and I was, believe it or not, driving up here, I was studying, it's a deer tick, deer tick um. Some kinda deer tick study, I believe, that you guys are doing, and then there's another one too, I can't remember what that one is.
Moose collar and things.
Yep, yeah, then, and that one's probably being heard this week, I'm skipping LCCMR this week, so they'll be sending me the the printouts and and stuff like that. I kinda, I'm kinda partial to northern Minnesota projects as much as I possibly can, so. And I don't mind being on camera saying north of Highway two, in case any of you are wondering, so.
Thank you.
You said, how much was going to the Get Your Gammie Trail about?
I think in last year's LCCMR bill was about two million dollars, yeah.
Was that designated for any particular area, do you know?
Um some of it is acquisition and that type of thing, I don't think it's actual trail construction. But eventually, as you guys know, we're gonna wanna uh wanna connect all the way from from Duluth to Grand Marais on the Get Your Gammies.
We're just trying right now to get from Ski Hill Road to downtown Lutson, so we have more money that we need to work on. So I don't know if some of this will go for that, we need between three and four hundred thousand yet?
I'll have to talk to um Judy, Judy's the one that keeps track of where all those numbers are going, so I'll have to talk to her. But um in last year's bonding bill, there was money for that that portion of the trail too, so I I think we're, I think that's taken care of. But I can't guarantee it on that, so.
In a way, it's kind of good that it's been delayed because we don't have the apartments up yet.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if they're gonna go back that far, I think they're probably gonna go along the highway. But um anyway, if they do, you know, we'll have that to work around.
But even today, coming through Lutson, uh it needs to be done, cause there's there's bikes all over and on the on around the highway and stuff like that. That's just not a, that's that's not a good such a situation for the bicycles, so.
We just had the ninety niner, so.
I saw that, I'm gonna have to get up here, I mean, not that I'll ever ride it or anything.
Well, there's a thirty niner.
Yeah, is there a niner?
Nineteen.
Maybe a nine?
I've actually, I've actually been on my bike quite a bit this summer, I'm trying to exercise, and now that my knee's back in shape, I'll get back on it again. But I'm not sure I'm ready for.
I'd be all game for a point niner.
Point niner, there we go.
Bottom of the hill or to the winery, I don't know.
Bottom of the hill sounds fabulous, a point niner straight down.
The bridge is being worked on at the Ski Hill, but so they had to move their start a little bit closer, but they worked it out.
Well, and another another thing, and now I'm talking about that, uh Tim Kennedy had a proposal in LCCMR for the mountain bike trail too. And that's that's in there, and so far that's received good, good, good uh. Scored well in in amongst the group.
For the Sottooth Bluff?
Yeah.
It's okay, good.
For the connector trail, right?
I believe so, yeah. It'll add, I think Tim told me, another twenty-six miles are still total, once once they're all done, so something like that. He's a, he's an advocate, you guys can be proud of.
Oh, for years.
Comes down to the Capitol, he makes the rounds, and I think he knows everybody in the DNR, so.
Yeah, so you mentioned in the omnibus that um there was likelihood that some money to the Shorter Historical Society. Does that include different historical societies in Minnesota, or how does that work?
That would've been, that would've been statewide, and the Township Association was behind that. A lot of, a lot of these small townships have their own historic society, and a lot of them have been donating to help keep them funded. Cause of their own little whatever, whatever they have going on, they didn't realize they're violating violating state statute. And so when when we introduced that bill, the Township Association got behind it because, you know, townships are. You know, a lot of our townships are appears formal local government and and uh they don't have a lot of money, they don't have a lot of levy or anything like that. And uh but if they if they didn't have the money to um finance their own historic society, then they'd have to come to the county board and ask for it. Because the county board is who is the 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 authority on the historic society, and then and then the county board would have to turn around. And and divvy it back out of their levy, so it 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 makes it a little bit easier for these places places that have it. Another another one of the uh uh townships that have have that is uh Winton down in uh down near Ely. And they've got their own, the Dorothy something or other. Yep, and so they've been donating and stuff like that, so just make it make it a little bit easier to to do that without having to put another burden on the. On the county if they can use their own levy dollars to.
So what's the process? Because we have the um North Shore Commercial Fishing Museum, TOFTI Historical Society. So do letters go out to the townships, or how does that work?
They they will be notified when it becomes law, but it it was it was vetoed, the whole onwards bill was vetoed, so.
But how do we start over again?
I'll I'll introduce the same bill next year.
Okay.
And Senator Bakewell as well.
Okay, so then how do we know when to apply?
Well, you won't, there's no money from the state. It 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 just allows the townships to use their own levy dollars.
Townships, okay.
Yeah, there there won't be any money from the state.
So the levy money would be a a percentage, or how does the?
Madam Chair, the the right now, cities and counties have statutory authority to levy to support historical societies. And townships do not, so this is about providing townships with that authority to levy for to support their local.
Yeah.
Historical societies, it's not about a pool of money, it's about granting the townships the same authority that cities and counties already have.
And and they had been doing it, and they got dinged and they're out it, they didn't didn't realize they're violating statute.
Really, cause the TOFTI Township too said they couldn't, you know, I think there was requests for like up to ten thousand or three thousand or whatever. And they said they couldn't do it.
Right.
So now eventually they will be able to.
If we get, if we get that passed.
Yeah, if you get it passed, okay, it's all a process, that's why everything is in a step.
Yeah, we had it passed this year until the governor vetoed it, and and I and even though that was in the bill, I'm that I was not disappointed with the governor's veto. And Linda Lamb is on my case every day.
We'll be having talk to.
And she's another good advocate, I'll tell you, Linda Linda follows things pretty close.
I'll get together with Linda.
All right.
Well, you know, our historical societies in our Little Cook County, we have five of them.
Yeah, yeah, and they're important, because there's a there's an important piece of history in every one of those little townships. Or every one of those people that are having, you know, so it's important to remember.
One in my district is self sustaining, just wanna make that note. They've been self sustaining to this point, and they should ask for money, cause they've been left out up to this point.
I'll let the county board worry about that one.
Well, we're on the budget committee, so we'll think about it. The um Fishing Museum has never asked for any money, and they're twenty-two years old, so, but you know, we just put a new roof on. We do a lot of, that's also our tourism office down there too.
Okay.
So we're we're sharing the building between the museum and the tourism office, so we'll work on some things.
All right.
Okay.
I think one of the things that I can be proud of getting passed, and this was not this year, but the year before, is we moved the state historical preservation office. Out of the historic society and put it in the Department of Administration. And that should streamline some of these projects, because they were so outdated, that they were still doing everything on paper. And um part of moving it over to the Department of Administration was to upgrade all their computer systems and all that kinda stuff. But just an example, when we were working on the Masabi Trail, um when they were cutting the lines. For a new section of the Masabi Trail, they came across some puddings out in the middle of the woods. Trees growing up around them and all that kinda stuff, it took the shipo office eighteen months to okay that trail to go through there. Because they thought it might've been a mining operation or something, they didn't know what, or something. It would've been very easy for whoever was doing that trail just to pull that concrete out, but they did the right thing, cause they didn't know what they came across. But it was out in the middle of nowhere and it's concrete, I mean, there's there's some things that have strategic preservation stuff. And some things that just don't, and to take eighteen months to decide whether whether that is uh historical or not is actually a little bit ridiculous, so.
I just to share a story, I'm I'm on the local Cook County Historical Society Board. And we have this blacksmith shop that we wanted to change some of the window treatments. And uh shipo said, well, you gotta do it this way, this way, this way, and we couldn't do it. We just couldn't even get close to getting it done, so we had to go through a very elaborate process. But all of a sudden, thanks, it got streamlined very fast from one meeting to another with that action. Because, you know, I can see their point, but it became so bureaucratic uh and so costly. And then when you compare them by looks, you can't really tell the difference between just fixing it up, rather than replacing it with these little pieces of wood.
And and Stephen Elliott, the now retired director of the Historic Society, was a very, very nice man, very fine man. He works very hard for asset preservation and stuff like that. Um he was um dead set against the bill and and uh I wondered what I was up against when I. When I introduced it and went to committee on it and stuff like that, but we got it, we got it done and I and I. I'm I I truly believe that we need to preserve our historic sites that need to be preserved and and stuff like that. But uh you can certainly, you can certainly move faster on than eighteen months on a couple of chunks of concrete, so. Better, you know, that that if that's all that's left, I'm not sure you wanna, you know, maybe put a signpost up there and say there were a couple of chunks of concrete here. Whatever, but I mean, that's.
They rest in peace?
Yeah, maybe they rest in peace, so.
You could pick them up and build a museum around them.
Yeah, exactly.
So the bonding money for the harbor, um is that going to be, I don't even know, is there's there a committee here in town that works with harbor development?
That that's a, as far as I know, that's a chamber project, they're the they're the ones that were behind that. That money will be available the first of first of July, and I'm sure there's some other hoops that they're gonna have to jump through. But uh the city, the city certainly um put their best foot forward on that by moving their public works building and all that stuff. To a to another location to open up that whole that whole area down there, and I think it'll be a uh, it'll be a nice project. One of one of the members on the bonding committee um that really helped me out, Representative Uglum on that, from down in. I say the cities, it's all the cities, once you, as far as I'm concerned, once you hit about Wyoming, it's all the cities from there on out. But I think he's from Champlin, but he's got a big boat, he's got like a twenty-seven footer or something like that. And they came from two harbors to here, and they had a heck of a time pulling it out of the out here. Because it on the east end, it's so shallow, so on the west end where that's gonna go is a deeper water ramp. So I mean, he was a big push behind that, because they really had a tough time getting his boat out of the water. So I don't know, him and some friends drove up and then somebody followed up with the trailer and picked him up up here. And they they didn't have an easy time getting their boat out of the water, so it was kinda nice, Representative Uglum retired, but he's a, he was one of, he was the vice chair. Of the of the capital investment committee, and he was, he was a big push for that project, so it always helps out when you can work across the aisle and and uh. Get, you know, get these kinda things done, so.
Champlin's between Anoka and Maple Grove.
Okay, it's all in the cities as far as.
I lived there and I was a city girl, so.
Okay, once I, once I hit Forest Lake, I know I'm twenty-five minutes from my apartment.
So you'd have to go that away from Forest.
Okay, all right.
Jeff knows where it is. And Molly.
That was the administrator of that part of the district.
See, there you go, you picked the right one.
Well, our housing is moving along, so we have four homes up here.
That's nice to see, and then hopefully that the other other part over by the Electric Cooperative will get get going. Um I know I know uh workforce housing is is a bigger challenge for Cook County than. Then it it's a challenge for all of rural Minnesota, and with the amount of private land, developable land that Cook County has. It becomes a bigger challenge for you, I'm gonna get ahold of uh um Jim and and uh. Find out if I can take a look at some of those houses, I know I know where they're at, so I can drive by and see, uh last fall when we toured them, it was uh, it was fun to tour them. And see what was going on.
One is for sure sealed up and ready to go, the um sheet rock and everything is done.
Okay.
And it's not just necessarily buildable land, it's that the city of Grand Marais is the only infrastructure that connects to public waters, is where our struggle is. I mean, I think it's just unheard of what we're doing in Lutson, because we're not connected and we're having problems, so. You need to be hooked up to city sewer and water and just doesn't.
Yeah, because you run into, if you don't have city sewer and water, then then you run into the redundant program, problem of of mountain system. Their septic system, you have to have room to be able to build the second one from when the first one fails, and they will. Um so I told my wife at our place, we had a mountain system in our place, and I said, I'd hook up to public sewer if they tomorrow, if it came out that way. But we've got a spot that we keep clear to the west of our, the west of our house, at some point in time, we built it, uh it's eight years old now. At some point in time, twelve to twenty years from now. twelve, uh, twenty years from now, when that mound fails, we're gonna have to be ready to put another one in, so. They own, they, all those things have a maximum life capacity, so. And my backup wasn't able to make it. Remember, remember last year, Representative Slocum came with me. She actually embarrassed me, but she's backed out, she's backed out and she lives in Richfield. I texted her, she said she might be up tomorrow, but she's, Linda retired too from the legislature, so.
So they're gonna come out to Superior National?
What's that?
Will they come out to Superior National?
I don't know if she will or not. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let her know. She might, she might come to Hellsing tomorrow night, so.
Okay.
If she gets back in time.
Cool.
Thanks for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
You know, if I can close here or whatever, I, I absolutely enjoy representing District Three A. I, I work hard. I'm not a, I'm not a, um, crusader. I don't have my, I don't have my crusading topics like some of them do. I just keep my head down and work and try to do the best I can for the district. And I, I truly enjoy it, so. It's, uh, it's a lot of fun down there. Last week I was at, last Saturday I was at a thing in Tower, uh, some cultural event that I was the keynote speaker at and Commissioner Patrick Boyle was there. Um, his wife sings. I don't know if you guys know that. She's a outstanding singer. And they have a, a part of the program is a singing group and, and, uh, so that's why, that's why she was there. And Patrick said to me, he says, I don't know why you gave up gravy county commissioner job to do this, but I'm glad you did. Well, you know, the county commissioner jobs aren't always gravy either. We all, we all know that. And, but, uh, no, I, I truly enjoy it and I, I, yeah. As long as I keep getting sent down, I'm gonna keep doing it, so.
Well, I hope you don't have a lot of foul texts like you get from a certain commissioner in Cook County. Thank you for answering them.
We've been friends a long time, Commissioner Kirk.
Yes.
So, and I get, you wouldn't believe some of the texts and emails I get, so.
They're not Tufaologists for the public. They might be WTF.
I got one from a nurse here, a, a email from a nurse the other day in, in, uh, ORE. And it was long. I thought, oh, I've never talked to this guy. He, he might be a kook. And then, uh, the next day he said, uh, apologize for the foul language. He said, um, I had a little too much to drink and probably shouldn't have been on the computer. He said, so, so him and I have talked since then. So you have that, you know, people, people get on a roll and, you know, they, you forget, uh, sometimes people forget that, uh, all this stuff is always public knowledge.
It's in writing.
Once you hit send, it's out there, so.
And I will tell you.
Right, counselor?
That's right. And I've had one sip of alcohol in my life and my grandmother often says, there's no excuse for your behavior.
Well, thank you very much. I, I, I truly love coming up to Cook County. I really enjoy what I'm doing, so.
Are you meeting with anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
I'm getting all kinds of stuff here. We're meeting with tribal council this afternoon, three. And then, uh, I got other meetings set up tomorrow and I'm gonna be doing some dornoching tomorrow. And then, uh, then we got the Superior National thing on Thursday, and so it'll be a busy few days.
Okay, lots of donuts and.
No, no, I had my donut, I had, I'm good. I, I really didn't need the one I had, but it's, you know, you gotta go there.
You do, definitely.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
See you guys later.
Appreciate it. See you later. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There we are.
There we are, yes.